Six o'clock, a caller meeting to order. Sarah, will you do the roll call, please?
Tim Whitaker.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Present.
Eric Goff.
Here.
Prkanan Norton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant. Michael Bush.
Present.
Ronald Truitt.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as submitted.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff to approve, seconded by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Anybody to speak under the open governmental? Did you sign in?
Uh, no.
You know you're supposed to sign in.
Which? Okay, my name is Corey Rodriguez. Address is 498 Woolen Mill Road, Martinsburg. The subject I'm going to talk about, I know it doesn't directly relate to you, but it relates to the community. So, we're going to talk about what I talked to the commissioners about two weeks ago, WVDOH, specifically District 6. When I talk about that and we look at our community, our growth being the fastest-growing county in West Virginia, I think about safety and how are we keeping up with it? Well, with our DOH, we're 10 years behind, at least that, behind our growth. So, when I watch these meetings, I see community members come up here and talk out about, you know, traffic problems, safety, turn lanes, you know, are these intersections safe or any of that? Nothing's being heard. I understand it's not your responsibility, but we got to get the message to the people that are failing us, our DOH District 5, and they have to understand that by pushing off and saying, "No traffic studies," you know, none of this, now I hear they're turning down our developers when they're offering to put in deceleration in turn lanes? What, I mean, everybody knows the roads are not safe in this county. It is because of the growth. So, we need everybody, you guys, the commissioners, the people of Berkeley County, to beat down the ears of the people in DOH, and they have to understand, they are failing us. They are failing us countywide, and they need to reexamine what determines a traffic study. Why, why doesn't people on Route 9, Route 45, Route 51 get treated the same? Why is one worth a traffic study and why isn't the other? You're discriminating. You know, this is the 21st century, but in West Virginia, we run our government like it's in the 19th century, and all these laws and rules need to be updated. And we can't keep discriminating because what's going to happen here is people are starting to get upset with all the traffic and problems created. They're going to get aggressive, and you're going to have a lot more crashes and maybe even fatalities. Now, who's going to take responsibility for that? Somebody has to. Somebody needs to step up in our DOH and show that they care. And as far as our state delegates, senators, our federal senators, representatives, I'm sorry, half of them have been in there for how long and they don't know the priority that a bypass should be in Hedgesville? That project should have $100 million already into it, and it should be funded. And since nobody's doing it, my, my thing I'm going to take on for this county is I'm going to show up at every planning meeting, and I'm going to question what the DOH is doing with each project to make sure we're ensuring the safety of every person in Berkeley County and everybody that drives through here. Because right now, DOH, total failure. Our delegates, everybody, they're failing us. We deserve better, and that's what I intend to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak under the sunshine law? Okay. First, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Truitt. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. We have four public hearings this evening. Grade Road Development is the first.
The first public hearing tonight's a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Grade Road Development filed 2402-026. The developer is Castlewood Consulting LLC, and the engineer is CEC Inc. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 6, Parcel 25.51, and is located on the south side of Grade Road, approximately one mile west from Williamsport Pike. The developer's proposing a two-story, 7,000-square-foot cabinet manufacturing workshop and warehouse on 4.3 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On April 1st, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Lane Tobin from CEC.
Okay, this is the public hearing. If you have questions or comments regarding this project, this is your opportunity to make those known.
Sign here, too?
Uh, yes, please.
Yes, Corey Rodriguez again, 498 Woolen Mill Road. My only questions about this project is, was there any discussion with DOH about a traffic study or the need for it? And was there any, you know, anything else like turn lanes, anything that would make the entrance and exit of this safer? Was any of that discussed?
Before you'll see DOH in the department, the provider of traffic. I can probably elaborate on a little bit more.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that.
Go ahead, Dan.
The, in our preliminary discussions with the DOH, since this site is not open to the public, it's not a, not, there's no showroom or anything, they're not anticipating to, over the 100 trips or even really the 64 trips the IT manual suggests, so we're being conservative. And, and, and those are like those concerns, we actually have had preliminary discussions with the DOH on ways to both extend the sight line and to increase the safety of the existing entrance. There actually is, we had one preliminary meeting already, and then we actually have a site visit meeting this week.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak regarding this project?
If not, a move to close public hearing.
If the record shows that there is no additional comments, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. Tobin or of the staff?
Hearing none, ma'am. I make a motion that we advance the sketch plan to preliminary plan stage.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to move this project forward to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next public hearing is Westview Ridge.
Yes, this is a public hearing for requests for sketch plan advancement. The project is Westview Ridge. The file's 2401-003. The developer is Thomas Companies LLC, and the engineer is Foxon Associates. It's located in the Hedgesville District, Tax Map 37, Parcel 25.14. The site's located on the south side of Dry Run Road, approximately 0.85 mile northwest from the Interstate 81 interchange. The developer's proposing 95 single-family detached lots and 44 villa lots on 49.15 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No water, or no waivers or exceptions have been requested. On April 10th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, good evening. Steve Sianovich with Foxon Associates.
Okay.
Linda, if I could, could I make a quick comment regarding traffic on this? As we normally do under the sketch plan phase, we do consult Division of Highways. In this particular instance, the Division of Highways did request that a traffic study be done at this location. Now, in order to begin the traffic study, the first thing our consultant, traffic consultant needs to do is write a scoping letter, meaning we intend to, you know, evaluate intersections A, B, C, and D. We've prepared that scoping letter and sent it to DOH. It's currently under review by DOH, so at this time, I cannot speak to the extent of the traffic study that will be done out here, other than we did prepare a scoping letter for review of DOH, and a traffic study will be required on this project.
Right, well, I see here that it says it has been requested from the DOH.
I wanted to just comment and make that clear.
Yeah, this is a sketch plan, so there is a lot of information to transpire before anything goes forward, but I appreciate you giving us that heads up.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding this project from the public? Forward, please, give us your name and address. It would be nice, that way we have it for our record, and you may want to pull the mic down since you're a little shorter than the rest of the people that have spoken.
A lot taller. She said Steve was a lot taller.
My name is Emmy Koval.
Hold on, pull, pull the microphone, there we go.
My name is Emmy Koval, and I live at 1654 Lost Road, which is lot number nine of the Charles Grant subdivision. The rear of the property, of my property, butts up to the proposed Westview Ridge development, and I have several questions and several comments. I'd like to know, have any environmental studies been done to retain or protect the natural resources, wildlife, or the watershed? I'd also like to know, are you placing any visual buffers, such as trees, fences, the like, between the development and the existing properties on Lost Road? I would like to propose a buffer of at least 25 feet between the rear of the affected Lost Road properties and the development. The next question I have is, has a hydrogeologic testing been done to evaluate the groundwater quality and potential effects on our existing wells? Fourth, I'd like to say the Dry Run is a very curvy, hilly, and unlet road with very limited site distance at the corner of Dry Run and Lost Roads. A development entrance will pose serious danger to traffic traveling in both directions. By adding 95 single-family homes and 44 villas, it also increases track, traffic on Lost Road as well as on Dry Run, and both of those are only two lanes. I also see a major impact on schools, hospitals, fire and rescue, and safety in the area. The last question I have is, will there be any restrictions or covenants placed on this development, such as above-ground pools, additional buildings, parking of recreational vehicles? And I would also like to voice my opinion that I'm opposed to this development because I feel it will adversely affect our property values, our safety, and our welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sianovich, do you want to answer some of those things right now?
Sure. We have engaged triad engineering to assist on any wetland studies. Well, actually, before I go there, some of you may have been on this planning commission back in 2004, 2005, where this project was approved at one point under the name Sundance Valley. Very similar design compared to what we have today. Economic times weren't the greatest back then, so the, really, the job was shelved for, you know, almost 18, 20 years. Back to the comments that, that were made or questions that were posed, we have engaged triad engineering to assist in any wetland evaluations. This being a sketch plan, there's still a lot of work to do ahead of this. We needed to get before this commission to really advance it to the next stage, the preliminary plat design, where we can, you know, get into detailed engineering and studies and things of that nature. Typically, well, first of all, at present, there are no buffers proposed. Typically, per your ordinance, we buffer unlike uses, commercial to residential, for example. We normally don't buffer residential to residential, but I will certainly share that with the, with the developer and express the concern that was raised here this evening. But at present, our sketch plan doesn't show any buffering. As far as well impacts, we haven't done anything, and the reason being, this site's going to be served with public water, so we don't look to withdraw any additional water from the aquifer as a result of this project. Traffic study or increase of traffic was also discussed when the last speaker raised some questions, and I believe I addressed that earlier on today, that traffic study will be done, and once we get the scoping letter, the traffic study will be done. As far as impacts, of course, any development that's going to bring growth is going to impact schools. We've completed the school impact assessment that we normally do at sketch plan for residential uses. Impacts to, you know, other facilities, water, sewer, et cetera, we typically ask for those intent to serve or availability for service letters. I'm not sure we have them on this particular job yet. Normally, that's something we would get at the preliminary plat phase, but in this case, we've had those statements of availability previously under Sundance Valley, when that was approved, again, nearly 20 years ago. And as far as covenant restrictions, of course, covenants and restrictions will be required. Typically, those draft documents are provided to the county attorney's office for review and comment at the time we submit the final plat for the project. So, again, we're here tonight for sketch plan. Many of these questions I can't answer because we're here for sketch plan. I'd be happy to clarify anything if I wasn't clear on that.
Just let me go into the school impact study. You did that in January of this year. Have you received anything back from the Board of Education yet?
No.
I sent it to the Board of Ed.
Oh, you sent it, okay.
Yeah, they, I sent it to the contact there that they've given me. It's been multiple contacts for some time now, but, uh, and I know that he gives it to the Board of Education and he's asked it at the.
Okay.
I'm not certain I've ever had any feedback.
They never give.
From the Board of Ed. We've been doing this forum for years now, yeah.
I know that, but Mrs. Vogel needs to hear that, that the Board of Education does not typically respond with any feedback, and that troubles me a lot. And, you know, this is not a huge development, but they don't respond even on huge developments, and I don't, I don't know why.
One thing I will mention, the board has really provided us a website to use that's kind of real-time with regard to enrollment and capacity. I think they update them twice a year.
It's a little bit better now.
Yeah, you know, before, we might have had enrollment data that was a couple of years, yeah, two years old, you know, and.
I was going to add you.
Now, it seems like it's, it's close to real-time as you can get, that they may do a count, you know, around Christmas time and do another count towards the end of the year.
Mr. Sianovich, this is the question of Lost Road and Dry Run, that intersection. To the best of your recollection, is that within the scoping letter that's being considered by?
That would be one of the closest intersections, so I would assume it is in the, in the scoping letter. But, you know.
You also asked if there's. Clearly a drive off. Didn't ask for, didn't ask for that. One thing. DOH did go out there and did look at you. They could, they could flip with that.
Yeah, what's that distance?
At least vehicles. Whether it's slight distance.
I have like an overview. It's not very detailed, but I know it's more than 150, but it looks smaller than it actually is, it might even be closer than that.
I'm afraid I don't have that exact dimension with me this evening.
I, I think it's on the, I think it's on the, the end, the smaller end from where, at least I've been critical, even though satisfying the, the ordinance and letter, but maybe in spirit, you know, to be debated, this is better than somewhere, I think there are more houses that have more access to those two roads, but that's one issue. The, the double entrance is an issue that I would be skeptical of moving forward. Anyway, thank you.
That, that main entrance off of Dry Run Road is identical to the location that was approved years ago.
Right.
Obviously, we would have met, there haven't been any significant road changes out there, as Doug, Doug explained, other than I can only imagine, there's probably increased volumes, but our counts will, will quantify that once we get started on the traffic study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
There are no other comments. I move to close the public hearing portion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, we kind of talked here during the public hearing, but do you have any additional questions that you may want to ask Mr. Sianovich or the staff regarding this particular project?
Hearing none, ma'am. I make a motion that we advance the sketch plan to preliminary plat stage.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to advance Westview Ridge from the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is Patriot Federal Credit Union.
Yes, this public hearing is also a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Patriot Federal Credit Union Spring Mills, filed 2403-069. The developer is Patriot Federal Credit Union, and the engineer is Frederick Cyberton Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 14, Parcel 20, and is located at the northeast corner of Brown Road in Williamsport Pike. The developer's proposing a 2,895-square-foot bank with drive-through on 1.71 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On April 11th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Patriot Federal Credit Union?
Yes, good evening. Trevor Frederick, engineer FSA, representing the applicant.
Thank you. Is, is a public hearing, questions or comments at this time, please?
Will may I sign?
Sure.
My name is Corey Rodriguez. Address is 498 Woolen Mill Road, Martinsburg. My only question, questions regarding this project is, in terms of the traffic study, was anything discussed? Was anything talked about? Is DOH going to require or not? And, you know, being that it's a bank and you're going to have several customers in and out, is this where we would need turn lanes or any other traffic safety features?
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the public so we can answer them all at one time?
Now, to move the public hearing portion to be closed.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed. Okay, do you want to address Mr. Rodriguez's concerns regarding the turn lanes?
Sure. So, like on the previous projects, we did consult with the DOH before we came tonight for the sketch plan hearing. They confirmed that we do not need a traffic impact study based on the use and the amount of trips we're putting on this site. In addition, there was previously a traffic signal installed here at this intersection of US 11 and Brown Road. We're not proposing to put any turn lanes on this project. The entrance onto US 11 is going to be a right-in, right-out, which will restrict left-turn movements southbound US 11. We do have a main entrance on Brown Road, and we have it set furthest to the east of the property, so it doesn't create a traffic conflict there at the intersection of US 11 and Brown Road. We do have some, some lanes internally to get traffic off of the road and into the site. We have adequate stacking for the drive-through and within the site itself, so it doesn't back up onto Brown Road.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Trevor? Mr. Frederick, I'm sorry. Motion?
I have a motion to, to move the sketch plan meets the requirements of the subordnance, therefore, with staff recommendation, advance the sketch plan to preliminary plans.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Truitt, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to move the pre-application conference onto the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any questions? Motion passes. Thank you. The next public hearing is Stony Ridge, Section 5.
This is a public hearing for requests for final plat approval. The project Stony Ridge, Section 5, lots 57 through 63. The file's 2211-348. The developer's Stony Ridge LLC, and the surveyor's Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 5, Parcel 44, and is on the west side of Henshaw Road, approximately 1.5 mile from its intersection with Jarrettstown Road. This final plat proposes seven single-family lots on approximately 8.62 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of assurance for the. recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety for the amount of $100,034.56 plat to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Do we have anyone to represent this project?
Ms. Lanzer.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. White or of the staff?
Public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Questions or comments from the public, please?
There are none. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing, second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed. How about now, questions of Mr. White or the staff?
There are no questions. I make a recommendation that we move the final plat approval contingent on receipt of surety for the amount of $100,034.56 plat to be released upon receipt of surety and a completed developer's agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $100,034.56. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our public hearings. The next one is preliminary plan approval, Jackson's Hill Towns.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Jackson's Hill Towns, filed 2210-292. The developers ILA Properties and the engineers ILA Properties. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map 13, parcels 42 and 43, and tax map 17, parcel 75. This project's located off of Specs Run Road and Chandler's Glen Drive, approximately half a mile from Winchester Avenue. The developer's proposing 99 townhome lots on 17.14 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On April 18th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Do we have anyone to represent ILA Properties or Jackson's Hill Town?
ILA Properties.
I'm sorry, your first name?
Griffin.
Okay.
ILA Properties.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions?
Approximately, do you know the distance between Essex Drive and Hillsborough Drive? Ball Park. Yeah, and obviously, DOH didn't have any issue. I see you've got an updated traffic study from them. Any comments from DOH regarding that entrance?
No, we.
Positive or negative?
We had entrance improvements.
Yeah.
Where we'll be putting a four-way stop on Specs Run to improve safety of that intersection.
Yeah, and this is just a commentary that, you know, this issue's come up several times, at least in the last six months, in that the dual entrance requirement seems to go away the closer those roads get together. And again, I personally have been critical of other projects that have been, you know, close to this number, but apartment highways is what it is. Thank you for your time.
Technically, they will be a second that.
Yes, we are under, we have 99, we have 99.
Thank you.
They're going to do another section, and it'll have us.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Ready for a motion?
Make a motion, we accept staff recommendations and advance the preliminary plan to final plat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to advance the project from the preliminary plan stage to the final plat stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final plat determin, I mean, sorry, Wagner's Outdoor Express RV.
This is a staff report for request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Wagner's Outdoor Express RV. The file is 2308-282. The developer's Wagner Estates LLC and the engineer is Foxon Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map seven, parcels 166 and 166.2. This site's located at 128 Recreation Lane, approximately 600 feet southeast from its intersection with Grade Road and Williamsport Pike. The developer is proposing the demolition of one existing structure, the construction of a 3,500 square foot garage, and construction of an office parts building. This site is currently served by public water and private septic. At the September 6, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted waivers to section 504.1, table 5-4, for maximum impervious coverage, and section 802.1.1B, 1.1A for a buffer area between commercial and residential parcels, and section 801.10 for gravel parking area. On April 29th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Steve Sianovich, Foxon Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or of the staff?
Hearing none, ma'am. I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Wagner's Outdoor Express RV. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, we have final plat determination now for Breeze Hill.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Breeze Hill, filed 2403-063. The developer is Town Homes Rental LLC and the surveyor is Roberts-Lanz Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, tax map 28, parcel 16. This property is located at the intersection of Tableau Station Road and Winchester Avenue. The developer's proposing the creation of three commercial parcels, which will consist of the previously approved 199 rental townhomes and one commercial lot. The total site is 16.74 acres and is served by public water and sewer. On April 26, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the, deemed the project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the June 3, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Ms. Lanzer.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. White or the staff?
Hearing no questions, I make a recommendation or make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising in public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the June 3, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Ms. Lanzer.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. White or the staff?
Hearing no questions, I make a recommendation or make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising in public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the June 3, 2024 Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct the public hearing on June 3, at which time the final plat will be determined, approved. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Final plat determination, Southbrook.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Southbrook, section two, phase four, lots 313 through 322, 327 through 331, 395 through 398, 401 through 406, 408 through 413, and townhouse lots 178 through 221. The file is 2403-056. The developers Chandler's Glen LLC and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map three, parcel nine, and is located on Shiley Road, approximately 0.3 miles north of Hattery Road. This phase proposes 31 single-family lots and 44 townhouse lots on approximately 18.10 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On April 1, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the June 3, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Mark McDonald with Integrity Federal Services. We represent the client on this project.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. McDonald or the staff?
Hearing no questions, ma'am. I make a motion to accept staff recommendation for final plat determination, advertising in a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval, June 3, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct the public hearing on June 3, 2024, at which time the final plat will be determined, approved. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, do we have anything from staff council? Discussion action motion.
Just, we're going to have our roundtable meeting tomorrow at the Holiday Inn. We only received back from three chairs, or a lot of it is repeat stuff that previously addressed, thing that we've done. So I don't anticipate a meeting the entire three hours, but we do have another meeting then on Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00, I believe it is. So I anticipate that meeting to be stuff that we have comments on. So, the three hours, we might not, but we just document those, the documents that we've had. Now, who's saying comments? Yeah, so I'll send out comments that we have after the meeting on the Excel sheet again, like I did last time.
Anybody want to commit to coming tomorrow?
I'm on Thursday, but I won't be there.
Are you serving coffee and donuts right now?
Yeah.
No, no, are you serving, are you serving coffee and donuts?
I can do that.
Okay. Maybe the council will be paying for my.
Commission?
Commission.
See if your husband stops it.
He's got a dentist appointment tomorrow morning.
Lucky guy.
Yeah, he's anxious to get that over with.
I'll be in Emmitsburg in the morning.
Oh, yeah, right.
Seriously. That's where I was all day today.
Okay.
For what it's worth, you've done a nice job. Thanks for the red line. Thanks for compiling all that.
Jack's a master with the board documents, so I got to give that to him, because we don't touch it.
It's easy to understand, so thank you.
Okay.
If there's nothing else.
If there's nothing else.
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker at 6:45. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.
Until next time.